Well, I'm Deana Kreidler, the Executive Director for the Chamber. And I kind of put a sheet on your desk already so you could kind of review and look at it. Instead of me reading line by line unless you really want me to do that, I can. Do you need an extra one, Bob?
Yes, please.
Sure. Anybody else need that one?
Probably under you.
Anybody else have one?
Nope.
Okay. So, I mean, just roughly with the Chamber, we're 95 years strong. We've been in this community for that long. But our mission is to serve as an umbrella organization and we promote the local businesses, arts, education, economic development, and different things like that. Also to maintain our quality of life and our living here. We don't just do it for the city, we do it for the county and surrounding areas. So we encompass kind of all of St. Mary through Bloomsdale. But really, our ED, I think, and I'd have to kind of look back into all these minutes from years ago, but when I started this position in 2000, it was a joint effort between the city and the county and the IDC as an Economic Development Chamber of Commerce Office with Marv Harmon. And so I was hired then, and then I was his assistant to Economic Development for 70 years before he passed away. And then when he passed away in 2007, that position went away, but our office still stayed the same. So we've been fulfilling that need in the community since then, just as a one person that's mostly now just more Chamber-driven and then Economic Development, kind of as the, I guess, the fourth member. So we're like three-fourth Chamber, one-fourth Economic Development through our office, unless we have something that comes in through IDC or even through Sandra as the ED Director. So we do all of the answering of their phone calls and taking all their information, getting it to their right people, their appropriate people. But I think probably the most important thing in the last two years is that the IDC and the Chamber have took on a mission to create business retention and expansion initiative as well as a housing initiative. Really, we all know that we want our population to increase, but we can't do that if we don't have no homes for them to live in. So we took on that initiative. And since then, five spec homes have been built in that time, actually four complete ones, I think, in the process. So the business and retention part of it, too, is that after speaking with several businesses in our community, we learned that Mississippi Lime and Tower Rock were going to be facing like a 50% turnover rate due to retirement. And so we needed to look at our workforce and see where we're going to lose those jobs and how do we keep them. And so we, I feel like we developed a pretty good plan. Ron Klein is here with IDC because he is kind of the forefront of BRE for us. And IDC is a direct arm of the Chamber, so they don't, they do not exist without us. So that's how they exist. You have to be a paid Chamber member to even be on their board. Only Chamber members can vote for their officers. And so they would not really exist without the Chamber of Commerce part of that arm. So with that, we created, going back to the BRE, we created a, I don't know really if it's a committee or what, but we met with the school districts to talk about the graduating classes and what they were going to do. And maybe we shouldn't push four-year universities as much as we should push skill and technical. And so school pretty much agreed with that. And St. Genevieve High School is bringing back the School Flex program this year, which is pretty awesome because it hasn't been in effect for several years. And what that is, is they'll bring on a student who qualifies, they can come onto campus only two hours a day, and then they could leave their campus and go to work for Mississippi Lime for the rest of the day. And still graduate with their credits and still learn their skill and learn a trade and maybe someday work there as a permanent position. And that actually is a paid position that Mississippi Lime is going to be doing. So they're the first ones to join the effort, or the Flex program. We are in the talks of other ones, but it's part of developing that workforce development for years to come, which in return is Economic Development. So we want those kids to go off and do great things and graduate and go to college and graduate and come back and maybe start their own business here in our community. And I think if we give them the right tools to do those things, that we could be successful with it. Some of the other things that you kind of see here, we do, we also partner with the IDC for Manufacturing Day. We do that every October with, through Mineral Area College. Last year, we were able to send 75 students from St. Jen Anne Valley to that training. It was a whole-day training. We're going to do it again this year. I think we've been doing it, Ron, four or five years?
At least four.
Yeah, something, yeah, around four or five years. So it's been really good for that, too. We also prepare all relocation packets for our community, people that looking to come in and live here, work here, mostly retire here, but they still are looking for that information, so we do all that. This past year, we partnered with the Missouri Chamber of Commerce Federation to bring important state issues to our region. One of those is being the lull of insurance in our community for small businesses and small business owners. So with that, we were able to bring the MEWAL program to the community. And we've probably gained about eight new members from that program. The part of that program is you have to be a Chamber member to qualify for MEWAL. And so that's why we had an influx of membership there. Also, we partner with, you know, the IDC on a regular basis, the city and the county on whatever we need to. We've been a part of many ribbon cuttings. Last year, we did 14 ribbon cuttings in our community. And some of them were new businesses, most of them were new businesses, and some of them were just relocations of businesses in the community. But it was still out there promoting commerce and promoting why you should live and work and play in St. Jen, and that's kind of what our mission really is. And we obviously want to continue to do those great things in our community and with our Chamber and with the aid of the city and the county. And we can't really do that if we're not all on the same page, kind of thing. So one of the other things, two, actually, two of the other things I'm pretty proud of are, last year, we launched a brand-new website that has created a lot of drive for our community, a lot of visibility in our area, and especially for our Chamber members, which are local businesses in this, in this community. We are, right now, 298 members at this time, and that was as of today's count. And in the last 12 years, we have maintained a 98% membership retention, or I'm sorry, in the last five years, we have, we have maintained a 98%. So I went back just five years to kind of show you what our lull was of dropped members, and it's always very small. So we're pretty happy about that. The other thing that we did this year, we launched in February of 2019, was our leadership program. And it has been very successful for us. We actually have a lot of people that are interested in it next year. So we take 20 recipients a year. This year, we had 16. Next year, I believe, will be sold out at that 20. But that's also creating awareness for our local businesses as well as just showing our businesses, the people that live and work here, what other businesses are in our community and how they actually operate. I know the city took part, you guys were the, our first program in February, the State of the City. And it was very informative for a lot of our people who didn't know how budget worked or how the department heads worked. So we kind of got an inside view of that, and it was really great. So do you guys have any questions for me?
What's your total budget?
Our total budget, just membership-driven or just total as an all?
Total.
We're probably at about $125,000.
Now, the $125,000, Deana, and stuff, what, you know, you had mentioned St. Mary's, I guess Bloomsdale, the county. I know what city participates. I mean, how is that determined or broken out, and what are the other?
Well, I'll tell you that probably 75% of our funds are membership-driven. We receive the $6,000 from the city, we receive $8,000 from the IDC, and we don't get anything from the county, but we get our building. So they don't charge us any rent for our building. We do pay our utilities there, but we don't have to pay like a housing rent or lease or anything like that. So...
So we're the only city that participates as far as funding?
As far as funding. Because, yeah, city, the city of Bloomsdale, they are kind of encompassed, I guess, with the county. We've never went to the Bloomsdale City to participate in funding. And I'm not sure why that is, Bob, that's how it was set up all those years ago. And really, nothing has really changed with that setup, except for Marv is no longer the ED person. So I don't know what his overall budget was when he was here doing that. It was a lot grander, actually, but when, when he passed away and we still facilitated that, we just, they kept their, the city kept their $500 a month the same. That's what they contributed when I was there in 2000. So whatever they did on top of that went strictly to Marv at that point. The city of St. Mary, obviously, I mean, they don't really have much of a budget, and we don't really have any businesses in that area right now that are Chamber members of ours. So, but we still do help. If they call on us, we do what we can to help them and get them the answers that they need if they're asking certain questions.
Gee, I think it's probably pretty safe to say, too, that as far as the Chamber is a...
I'm going to pass it over to you.
Never mind.
I was just going to mention that most, in my opinion, and I want Deana to confirm this, that most of the events that the Chamber works or, you know, supports and maybe runs are primarily here in the city of St. Genevieve. So, and that's in conjunction with Sanders Group and so on and so forth, too. So just recently, at the IDC level, we've reached out and got a little bit more involvement from the surrounding communities, example being Bloomsdale. We've got board members now from Bloomsdale and things of that nature. But that kind of coincides with the funding, too.
Yes. So a lot of the things, you know, as a nonprofit, whatever we bring in is what we put back out into the community. So when we do certain events, we're, there's not a whole lot of profit there for us, other than for us to maybe make small improvements for the next year on certain things. We have a golf tournament coming up next week, and all of those funds that we raise from that will be put into probably leadership or some BRE or housing initiatives and things like that. So that's kind of how we try to... My partner was supposed to be here, but, you know, so he could talk a little bit more about the money line, but if there, do you have any other questions?
What about the state, the Missouri Chamber of Commerce, what is, what the involvement that we have?
Well, I used to sit on one of their boards. I sat on their board for about six years. It was two different, three-year terms. But that also goes hand-in-hand with the Missouri Federation, so it kind of helps with local, we try, our Chamber is, we don't lobby. So our Chamber is not very cool to try to stay out of that chaos if we can. If we, if something comes to the forefront and we're asked to maybe write a letter of support or endorse a certain product, project, we actually take it as a whole board and we review all of the facts before we make that decision. It has happened. We actually endorsed our very first Prop last year, which was the Prop D. I'm not quite sure, remember what that was, but, you know, that was the very first time in the time that I've been at the Chamber that we've ever done that. So...
Must saw there, that for some kind of national award, aren't they? From Missouri Chamber?
Yes. Yeah.
Saw that sometime.
And last year, at our, I go to two conferences a year, one in the spring and one in the fall. And last year in the fall, our Chamber actually won the best website for small chamber in southeast Missouri, or actually in all of Missouri. And then we also won the best event for our annual gala, which was pretty impressive because we've never won those before, and so we must have been doing something right. And we are very proud of those.
Great.
And the website was kind of a feather to our hat because we had dumped so much time and energy into that project that it was great to see it pay off.
One of the things, Deana, that we've been a Chamber member for years and stuff, and we always ask, you know, what do we get?
Yeah, I hear that.
In place this year, the insurance thing came up, not only for the city, but we used it as part of our business and stuff. But I'd really like to see more of that come about. You know, it did save us more than our dues, you know, which was helpful and stuff. But anything like that, programs that are out there, I think would be very helpful, you know, as members and stuff, to be able to take advantage of, and that was a big one.
See, I will tell you that the Federation has been very enlightening for us because we used to not qualify for Federation because we didn't have 250 members. And so once we reached that, that area where we could actually start benefiting from some of their programs and their events, I think that's why you're now seeing that MEWAL program. So once we've reached that 250 mark, we, it opened us up to a whole other level of incentives for our members. So I think there's some more things coming down the pipeline that we're looking into. We need to obviously make sure that it's the best thing for our members and for our Chamber as a whole and even our city. So, but yeah, I'm glad, and it's been able to save a lot of people a lot of money, and I think it's a great program. So thank you for taking my time. Please.
Any other questions? All right.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you all for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys, very much.
Whoa. Is that all in there?
Yes. She was making plans for the house.
Hello, everyone. No problem. Everybody should have copies of the water and the sewer fund. Number 30 be the water budget, and 31 is the wastewater budget. Now, we'll start with the water fund. The totals you see here on the revenue side, on the first page, most of this stuff I shoot kind of low on because I can't predict, you know, credit card, you know, reconnect fees and stuff like that each year. So I shoot on the low end on that stuff. The metered sales, that is based on the current eight-month totals, that's the way everything's been going. Trend's been increasing a little bit every year. It should be right online with where it's at. We continue to grow our emergency fund balance. We have 349, 311 in our CD, we have 885, 483, or 434 in the emergency fund balance itself. Goal is to get those up to a million each on both water and sewer.
So that you feel is needed?
Yes.
How do we get those up, Steve?
Predicted revenue, budget for less than what you have coming in, and you save money. That's the short version of it.
Yeah. So we're getting there, slow but sure.
Yes. Actually, both of them would be, be at that point right now. The wastewater, it's taken a couple $150,000 hits over the last couple of years. Had we not had that, we'd have, you know, we'd have been in trouble there. Any questions on the first page? Second page, work comp, insurance. You get down here, you'll see postage, that's for water bills and such. $3,000 for vehicle maintenance. We've got a truly large tanker truck that we have to maintain each year. Tires clutch, it always needs some work. Vehicle rental, that's the rental of an aerial lift so we can power wash our on-site tank and our water plant and help maintain the building at that location.
How many times a year do you use it?
Once, for sure. And if we don't use it two times, we'll run a back trailer and do some maintenance with it.
You expecting to use that this year?
Yes. The lime and spray, that's continually, continuing to go up each year. As you can see, a couple of years ago, I mean, we were at $96,000, and now we're actually going to go over by the time we're at the end of this year.
But just in that line?
Just that line. Thing with that is, we don't find out the rate increases until January, and you got to prepare the budget for that. And they don't tell us.
Steve, I was kind of surprised on overtime. I mean, I see you guys out weekends, and how do you deal with it?
That is, it's city overtime.
City overtime?
Oh, okay. Sue, David, Adam, allocated for a portion of their time.
Well...
That's same way with the insurance and the retirement, right?
It's all, it's all just a percentage of there.
Right.
Go to the next page. We have utilities. As you can see, the electric went up again as due to a rate increase.
Where's Ron Klein?
Yeah, just snuck out.
He left real quick.
He's right outside.
All of these are just operating expenses. Missouri One Call required by law to do that. The computer software maintenance, that's for the metering and city hall. The increase on that line compared to last year was due to the electric. Capital improvement section, the capital outlay section. I've budgeted $216,500 as a combined total for valves in our lime, lime building at the water plant. That is new water lines for a portion of North 4th Street, which is leaking right now, and down Biltmore. And then that will also include North 6th and Weiner Street. Maybe. So our, our funds in the emergency fund balance that we've exceeded over $1 million this year, so we could use that money for water line replacement as well here. Office of...
Our goal, when we adopted the goal to do your rate program, was to get $1 million in reserves of both the water and sewer. Water made it this year, sewer will make it next year. It's up to you to decide whether you want to carry more than that. If it's not, then that money's available, as Steve suggested, to make additional capital improvements in line replacement on the higher priority items.
How are we overall on the old water lines and old sewer lines?
As far as...
Replacement? It's, at some point in time, someone's getting pretty old, aren't they?
Yeah, that's exactly what that $216,000 is for.
Okay.
And the additional money that we just talked about.
Okay.
The older part of town, the downtown area, Main Street is complete.
Right.
That was done in 2010, I believe.
Yes.
The Merchant and Market Street and Jefferson Street, Jefferson was redone once, so that's PVC. The downtown area, I can knock on wood, say I've never had a leak down there. But the north end of town, where we're starting this main replacement, that's, that's our problem there.
Okay.
Up 4th Street and both sides. So, so that's where we're, we're targeting.
And is that something you guys would do, or is that outsourced?
It's contracted out.
Okay.
Is that pretty expensive?
From the contractors and engineers I've talked to, it comes up to about $100.
Steve, I noticed you're taking a pretty good charge in, or change in credit card fees. We're seeing it all the time, even from our vendors and our business where they're charging people or surcharge. Do we do that to use credit cards?
Let's see, question?
We do not. If they use, if they pay online, they are charged a fee that goes to the company that does that. But we do not charge a fee in here.
Next line, the office equipment, there's $1,000 there. It's for anything that, you know, in the office that may go down, may get received printer.
They guarantee a new computer?
Yeah.
In office?
The study at the, from Microcom and our engineers in the past recommend the computers in the water plant be replaced every two years. The computer we have there now, we've managed to make it five on.
So will that cover that?
Yes. Yeah, it's just a tower. The monitoring stuff isn't bad. Water tank improvements, that is the maintenance agreement with Utility Services. It's actually SUEZ Group now, not Utility Services, but. Motor vehicle and equipment, that is $22,000 in that line is for a mini excavator. We currently have a 2014 mini excavator. It's out of warranty and it's starting to become nickel and dymus a little bit. We could trade up to a larger machine, which is needed now. The original usage for the mini excavator was when we did a meter change-out program. We had it in almost every yard in town, so a smaller unit was ideal. But it's not the case now. So we could actually trade up our machine for $22,000 and have a five-year warranty with no worries for the city.
I saw Gary shaking his head back there. Is that something that would be used by his departments as well?
Yes.
And Gary, that would be useful, to have a larger one for you guys? Thanks.
Larger than what we have and smaller than the new one?
Yeah. Roughly $800. We purchased that machine in 2014 for $29,000. I've talked to a couple of different people, and pretty much trade in on it would be $18,000 or $19,000.
Does it seem like on the site repairs that we're going to come in quite a bit under the $10,000 for last year, or for last year's budget, under $81,000?
Yeah, there's invoices out there that came through. These are based on eight-month delays.
I got a couple invoices that come up with that.
That's a kind of a shared account that Gary can, can go to as well. Our water leak sites require Gary to repair the patches. Let's see here, $4,000, that's for a air compressor for the water plant. It's a two-stage compressor, the current compressor we have now. It's the compressor that's used to offload the line from Mississippi Lime. That compressor is, it's still working, but it's very slow. They don't make a rebuild kit for that compressor anymore. That is the original compressor from 1994, and it runs every day. So $4,000 for a new two-stage air compressor.
They had that, but price-wise, it's not bad.
No, that's, that's not too bad at all. Next one's $30,000 for well cleaning. I've got $30,000 in there. It's for two wells to be cleaned. I get a discount, about $6,000, $7,000 discount if you do two a year instead of just one. Saves on mobilization, chemicals, employee time. Saves some money there. Much loan payments, so. Any questions on the water side?
Well, let's go back to the, add to the question of whether you want a proposal for using the amount that's in the emergency fund that's above the $1 million threshold, or would you just like to leave it at this?
Thank you. You said you would recommend a million be there, and that's...
Yes, and we've exceeded that now, and that allows us to free up two-hundred-and-thirty, two-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand-five-seventy-six, which would double my project, save money on engineering time.
I would say yes.
She'll make the budget amendment to reflect that, reducing the cash reserve for a million, putting the balance in the...
Three thousand line?
In infrastructure improvements.
The next budget'd be the sewer fund, wastewater fund, budget's built the same way. Everything's based on the eight-month totals, the reserves on this line. Emergency fund balance is five-seventy-five, five-seventy-seven, and we have two-thirty-three, five-seventy-six in the CD. That is our reserves. We have a hundred-and-nine-thousand-one-fifty-three projected at the end of this budget here in reserves. So, two-hundred-thousand, two-hundred, one-hundred-and-ninety-thousand shy of where we'd like to be. Everything there is utilities. There are no increases in the materials and supplies. The, line sixty-eight-ten, have eight thousand dollars in there. That is for sealing the parking lot at the wastewater plant, trying to preserve the asphalt parking lot that we have there. I also have on there for gutters for the building. Building doesn't currently have gutters, has a metal roof with ice guards.
So you haven't spent anything, if nothing's been posted, for the five thousand's budgeted this year, for that line item?
Before we seal the parking lot, we're going to go in this year, and there are patches in the asphalt where they brand buried conduits at the entrance and from one end of the parking lot to the other. We're going to perform the parking lot repairs in-house.
In this year's budget.
In this year's budget, and that way it can be sealed next year. Next page, building insurances, capital improvement projects. Line eight thousand, there's a hundred-and-five-thousand dollars there. That will be for, I don't know if anybody sees my notes, but it says Riverview, but it's actually Biltmore. They'll be replacing the sewer on Biltmore that comes off Fourth Street and including Small equipment, that's five thousand dollars for jetter nozzles. The current jetter that we have, let's see if we can get into this now. Current jetter we have is, has been ailing, we've been nursing along. As of the past couple of days, the, first off, on the back of the jetter, there's a hose reel, it all runs on hydraulics. That is, the hydraulic unit's failing on it. We've got prices on it. Given they can find the parts, we're looking at four to six thousand dollars for the replacement, and hope that's the fix.
What would a new one cost?
With the trade-in of this machine, sixty-six thousand. Size of the water in the wastewater plant, this is the most crucial, crucial piece of equipment we own.
I'd say every day, almost.
Every day. Now, as of the past couple of days, the tank, the machine has two three-hundred-and-seventy-five gallon tanks on it. One of the sides blew out on one of them, so we'll be at half-capacity. The machine's been continuously losing power, which is why the jetter nozzles are in here. You get smaller jetter nozzles that'll increase pressure, but it restricts the volume of water and restricts the amount of material you can move in a sewer line.
How old is this machine?
Two thousand and nine.
Two thousand and nine?
Yeah.
Any plans to replace it?
That's what we're talking about.
So, I mean, it needs it.
Yes.
It is an important tool.
Yes, absolutely.
So how long would it take to get this one fixed?
They said if they could find the parts, it would take eight to ten weeks.
It's a lot of backed-up sewers.
At this time, could I ask you guys if I could put it out for bid and...
Absolutely.
I think I'd say so. You want to go the same size machine, or a little bigger?
It would be, the machine we have now, it is a thirty-gallon-a-minute, two-thousand PSI, and there's some hills in town that the machine won't pull, and there's a lot of debris that it won't pull out sometimes without, it'll do it, you just have to do it for a very long period of time. Most new machines are forty gallons a minute at twenty-five-hundred. It's kind of a standard, so.
Same hose, though?
Yes.
Same reach?
Yes.
Can we trade this one in?
With the trade-in, the machine would be sixty-six thousand. I don't know what the best way to go would be, to trade it in, to sell it at the auction. They're only offering about seven thousand to the machine. But I don't know if you'd get more at an auction or not.
Pretty specialized.
If it doesn't work, you ain't going to buy it.
Yeah, they could, they could.
That is my budget.
I have a question for Sue. Somebody mentioned the credit card fees. Is that something we lose money on?
I mean, every time, like, somebody pays their bill, we get charged from the company.
We get charged a convenience fee. We talked about that in years past, we just never did it.
You know, all those points that these credit card companies advertise on TV that they're giving people, that's where that money comes from.
Right, I know that. But how big a deal is it to put that into effect?
You'd have to pass an ordinance.
That's it?
That's it.
We don't have to...
Well, we have to be programmed to, we have to put it in, that's not the...
And that would apply to anybody on auto pay who's paying with a credit card? We'd have to figure out how that would work as well. And it would have to be reflected on the bill?
Who writes that ordinance for us to vote on?
Staff. Like, let's prepare an ordinance.
I would, yeah.
I would.
What would that be? Is it a percentage, Sue, or how does that work?
It's like three percent, yeah.
Of what, whatever your bill is?
Every credit card charges a different amount, but you pick an average, and everybody just gets charged the average.
Because each credit card charges a different fee, don't they, Bob?
Pretty close.
Yeah, it's close, but they all be charged the same.
About four percent, three?
Three, plus.
That's still a lot of money, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Can you let us know what average the percentage is, so that we can be a little better informed to pass something? Thank you.
And I guess we'd have to notify the people?
Oh, yeah.
It's our processor.
We just go through US Bank, let's hold on.
The final item, we've got this time every year, two hours exactly.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Consider whether or not you want to reward your employees for their exemplary effort by approving raises. Sue prepares a list of what the impact of that would be with the budget by department. Also, in the past, we have not just given raises gratuitously. When you approve it, you're approving a maximum authorized amount for the department heads, who then will do their annual reviews and make a decision on, within that limit, how much of a raise to give. I can tell you from my personal experience in the years, I've had three occasions to not give what was authorized because of issues. And so it didn't automatic that somebody gets what you approve. It's budgeted, it's within the department head's discretion to administer it. It clearly, since the police have been, will be getting a raise from the tax, it wouldn't apply there, so you don't see them on your list. After you approve the budget?
Why isn't it before?
Well, could they?
Well, there's a handbook that says July one, right? So how many did you, you should receive reviews by July one?
Oh, yeah? We haven't been doing it that way.
I would say.
It's been in September.
Well, why would we not do it that way?
Okay.
So you didn't receive any reviews prior to, on or before July one?
No.
Okay.
I mean, because historically, it's been done in September, notwithstanding what it may have said in the personnel manual.
Okay. So we would need to, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
We would then have that on the table to reconcile, either the document changes or the process to...
You approve the amount, but you don't approve the individual...
You just approve the department.
Payroll.
But we would, we would have some visibility under that if we wanted to...
You're welcome to ask any question about what we do anytime.
Because is it a merit raise, or is it a cost of living increase, or?
It's treated as a merit raise.
Okay.
And it's based on the department head's perception of that employee's performance over the last fiscal year. So, it's not automatic.
Okay.
Is it, is it an employee that scores, I don't know what the scoring system is, but a hundred, and an employee who scores eighty, is it still possible both employees get the full amount? That's completely up to the department head?
Up to the department head, it's possible, but certainly unlikely.
Do these also include the department heads?
I review the department.
You review the department heads?
And you review me. So usually at the end of the budget cycle, the mayor calls for a closing personnel for you to discuss your perception of my performance in the past fiscal year.
What is the cost of living running right now, Sue?
We looked at the social security, and it was two-point-eight.
And can you remind me how much the insurance rates went up?
It was, I don't remember the exact figure, it was under a single-digit, seven?
Seven or...
Six or seven percent.
Were these increased last year?
Yes.
What percentage?
Three percent.
Three percent? Do we know what the cost of living was last year, increase?
It was just about, it was about two-point-eight-five at this time last year. It ended up being just a little bit over three, I think, at the end of the year, in January.
But again, it's a merit raise, right?
It is not automatic. Yes.
No, I agree with you. It's not automatic, but it's a merit.
We don't have a merit system. We don't have a unified personnel program that defines the merit system, so it's discretionary. It's up to the department head to decide.
I have no issue with that.
Whether to give them, based on merit.
To me, it's a cost of living raise.
But not everybody will get it all.
Well, that's a sticking point for me, though. If it's cost of living, that's a whole nother matter. If it's merit, then I'd like to know...
What's the difference?
Well...
Cost of living is you approve it, and it's applied across the board without regard to evaluation.
Right, it doesn't matter about that employee's performance at that point. Agree with me or not?
But you've been doing this for a few years. How many have you not seen get the full raise in your ten or eleven years?
I personally not awarded the full amount four times.
Four times in...
In eight years.
And you use a numeric system to evaluate that?
Yeah, it's a two-part score system, but yes, there's a system.
Okay. All departments have the same scoring mechanism?
Everybody uses the same thing.
Okay.
And if I'm not going to give you the amount it will show on that evaluation, which you're asked to sign at the end of the review, it will be clear to you what my decision was based on.
Sure.
See, that's the only problem I have. I worked for federal government for twenty-eight years. You come down to the end of the year, and you tell a guy, here's what you're going to get, you didn't give him a chance to improve. You know what I'm saying?
Or you accepted subpar performance, and then you were...
That's the problem I've had when I worked here, versus when I worked for the federal government.
Well, I mean, you were here when I did this. We had an employee who had an attendance problem.
That's correct.
We dealt with that employee, counseled, put memos in the personnel file. It wasn't so bad that we wanted to fire the person, we'd like for them to improve. My opportunity to express that came with the latitude I had in awarding, awarding an increase.
Other question, will this amend all of the budgets, I assume, across the board like this?
Right.
They're not currently reflecting these at all.
About six o'clock.
Is this something we can revisit?
Yes. You should, I'm just giving you, I asked you to decide tonight. But we need to move on to deciding what our next step's going to be. You want to wait for our next meeting, and we'll talk about the kinds of things that you've observed, what you'd like to change, how you'd like to see it reflected, reflected, and, you know, and then we'll move on. So we'll have a whole forty-five minutes to an hour to hash out your concerns.
I know we're ready for our regular round, but on the, we're done with everybody's budget. Are we coming back and voting individually on each item, or is it up or down on the whole budget?
No, you'll tell us after you deliberate what adjustments you'd like to have, and you can do it line by line item, each department by department. Obviously, it's the ones that come out of the general fund that you have the most discretion. It's kind of hard to tell Steve how to run a treatment plan. No, don't buy that, that blow up.
Okay. Let's call the meeting over, stand for the pledge, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Hossel. Alderman Smith. Alderwoman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman Donovan.
Here.
Alderman Jokers.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Jones.
Here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderman Wilkin.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Very good. Move for approval of the agenda?
Move approval.
Second.
Call in favor?
Hi.
Is Keith Skaggs here?
No. Keith is not here.
Keith's not here, takes us to Martin's report.
Okay, so continuing progress on the Chadwell Lane project, we issued notice to proceed. I expect the contractor will give me a construction schedule in the next, tomorrow or the next day soon. The engineer who we have employed will be apprised of that, and work will begin. I also issued invitation for bids and advertisement for bids for the overlay work that we discussed, and those bids are due on August the nineteenth. We have a pre-bid meeting scheduled, so it's useful for the contractors who intend to bid to all walk the streets, ask their questions, everybody has a common understanding of what's required, and we have that scheduled. It's been a number of years since we've asked for, requested for qualifications for auditing Prior city attorney suggested that, well, you don't need to do that, and frankly, other cities don't do it. But a couple of Aldermen have said, well, I think we should, at least test the waters, see what's out there. So we issued advertised RFQs and sent specific invitations to twelve accounting firms who were selected by me based on a survey of governments and not-for-profit organizations in our, in our region. And so I found out who was working for them, and if they had the qualifications. You have to have certain qualifications in order to do public entity accounting. So that's the reason I went to the city's ambulance districts, fire districts, to see who was doing the work, because that tells me those people had that certification. And we will be receiving those, and I will be considering them. A number of communities ask a committee of the board to be set up to review and interview the accounting firms. Is that something you would want to do? You just want to leave it to me to... Is that something you would wanna do? You just wanna leave it to me to do it?
I don't think it hurt.
Got a volunteer?
I guess so. Guess so.
Okay, that's two. I think a two-person committee is just fine. The water tower construction is completed. Whatever works left is the work we're gonna do to just clean up the site, but all of the expenditures have been established, if not all made. And so the bank has cut the checks to, like, more fence finished today, but because the, the year was up, we went ahead and cut the checks to the companies for the amounts that we knew we would owe them. We're just holding the checks until the work is complete. The loan has been converted to a permanent loan, or lease, lease payment. And the county will begin making payments on, on that loan until we retire our certificates of participation and take over in twenty thirty. We've had some continued discussion with a potential purchaser for property on Progress Parkway, which we discussed in closed session tonight. I received administrative order from Judge Wendy Wexler, who's the horn, who's the presiding judge for the circuit. She had to order the filing of cases in the, in the circuit court, so that's, that's another step in the process of the court transfer that has, has occurred. I received, and you received in your packet, an email from the collector, Claudia Stupi, who after careful consideration has decided that she does not wish to collect anything but real estate and personal property tax for the city. This relates to our special tax bills that may result as a consequence of a public nuisance enforced.
We did not see that.
Sorry. I'll get it for you. It's a one sentence.
But they didn't buy what you told them?
You'd have to ask them. I have not communicated directly with the collector's office.
The most recent minutes that I read stated that their attorney was going to look into this more.
Well, apparently he did and Claudia said, no. That's the way I would take that because I read that and we have an email from her that says that she's not gonna do it, so that's a done deal, so we, we guess we're just, it goes back to what you were talking about. How do we, what do we do to? Now the property will have a lien on it, the one we have the money on it, if, when she sells it, if she sells it, we'll get our money then.
He said there's another way of doing it, right?
But wasn't there, for a couple of months, they were stating that if, if the, the residents of St. Genevieve voted on something, that then?
They sent a correspondence to Mr. Toma requesting ballot language with regard to a statute that does not apply. There, if we find people and assess those fines as a levy against the real estate, we have to have voter approval for that because it's a tax. This is not a tax. This is a reimbursement of actual expenses for removing a nuisance. And there's at least three statutes that authorize it and, you know, I've set my legal opinion to Mr. Toma as the collector's obligation to collect that. But again, if we can't force her to, to collect it, unless you wanna sue her and help her fight that.
And we, and we have a contract with her, is that correct?
Yes, and, and we will be revising that contract because there's been changes in the statute regarding the fee that, and our contract is old, so we'll be presenting to you the new contract and we can have that discussion at that time. The new, the statute now calls for a nine percent fee from the collector. We've been paying seven. So at least that will change. Whether or anything else will change, I don't know.
So it is possible to try and include something in the contract?
My expectation, well, the, the contract now contemplates that she would collect it. I expect that the new version that she will be submitting to us won't specifically exempt it.
Paul, you said we do in fact have a lien in place?
Yes.
Legally?
Yeah, we filed with the reporter's office. There's notice on the, on the property. She, she would have sold it.
Well, we have a lien on the hotel house, you know, we burned and we had to tear it down. So that property has a, has a lien. The question that is kind of open for discussion, and I think I know the answer, is if, if a property goes, is sold for back taxes, what happens to our lien? And that's why we were interested in having the collector collect it because once it's sold for taxes, there's an argument that our lien disappears. And we lose our leverage.
That was sold for back taxes, wasn't it? So what happened to our lien?
It's still sitting there. I notified the owner that if he wants to do anything with it, he's gonna have to come to the city hall. But I don't know that I can enforce the lien. I'm not sure I have to give a building permit. So the Friends of the Park, one park board member's kind of taken the lead for that. There was a grant given to them for some landscaping in the park and she's kind of not knowing what to do with it. So Gary's talked to her, said if you'll buy the materials with the grant that we've given to you, we'll, we'll install them. So that, that, that's gonna go forward. The, this is kind of interesting in how if you're going north on Fourth Street and you cross the creek at Lahe. You turn right, going east on Lahe, there's a strip of ground between the road and the creek that is in the name of Devato. How this irregular, not usable strip of land ended up being what it is, I don't know. It's going up for tax sale. Collector was of the opinion that the city, since it didn't have any other use, should acquire it at tax sale. I'm inclined to think we should not use public dollars to acquire something that has no public purpose or use. So, but I, I told her I would bring it to your attention.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Thank you. Complete my report.
Did we, what became of the Regents Bank asbestos removal?
It came in, well, the, nothing with the asbestos removal. They've got a building permit for the roof.
Did you contact DNR or?
No. Did you want me to?
Yes.
Okay. Look, I didn't know you wanted me to. I will. Make sure that the proper chain of custody.
Right.
Wouldn't that be on Regents Banks? Their, their disposal of it? I mean, why would the city wanna get involved in that? If it's the bank and the bank property, they're responsible for disposing of the product.
If they didn't do it right, somebody could come back and sue the city, I think. I mean, it's, it's a safe, it was, if it wasn't done right, it's a safety hazard.
They didn't get a permit to begin with anyway, so.
Right.
So you have that in your back.
But our permit doesn't do anything with asbestos.
We don't have any standards for asbestos removal. It's a EPA, DNR regulation. We have an interest that it be done properly because if it's not done properly, our citizens are exposed to fugitive asbestos products. So I think there is a, I think, an adequate justification for me to spend some time investigating it, kind of after the fact and whatever problem went away. But, but we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have known there was asbestos there. I mean, we, they get, come in and get a permit, we go out and look at it and say, yes, we don't test the materials.
Well, when it went by and they all had white suits on, it was pretty obvious.
Well, I would, I would suggest, though, that we, we, instead of going straight to DNR, we go to Regents Bank.
I'm gonna call Regents Bank, find out who the contractor was. I'm gonna call the contractor.
I wouldn't like to do that to anybody, you know, I give the, the one that's, let them, otherwise we could, we could cause a bunch of grief with them and, you know, let's go to Regents Bank and
That's fine.
Let them track it down.
Okay, that's fine.
All righty. Thank you, Martin.
Welcome.
David?
Yes.
Here.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. Hello, David. On my report, just wanna bring up a few things as far as the Heritage Commission. We had a big discussion last meeting about economic hardship, so I'm moving forward and trying to include stipulation to that in the ordinance. We will have a meeting, the nineteenth. We already have an application. Under the Rental Housing Advisory Commission, Martin mentioned this in his report last meeting, but we had a good meeting about mobile homes and pre-HUD mobile homes. On the staff report you have, it says meeting date to be determined, but that meeting will be August twenty-ninth at five PM. Invitations went out to all registered mobile home rental unit owners and as many mobile home addresses as I could find on GIS and in our system. And then Planning and Zoning, you all approved the special use permit for carpal collision last meeting and then we will have another public hearing on the twenty-second to approve another one that Planning and Zoning recommended.
What, what time does that need for the rental housing?
It'll be August twenty-ninth at five PM. Any questions?
David, Planning and Zoning and stuff, there was a comment that was made about the proposed use of the building there at Market and South Tenth Street. And it was brought up that there was no parking on either side of the street there. There's nothing marked.
Well, part of the traffic ordinance is there's no parking within thirty feet, I believe, of an intersection. Those aren't marked per se on many intersections. If that's not incorrect.
But just because of possible future truck traffic, there's always been an issue there. Thirty feet's not gonna cut it.
Well, you could adopt the neighborhood for the traffic ordinance if you'd like at that location where there could be additional parking.
I think that's something that needs to be looked at. Have you ever seen a truck make that corner?
We talked about this, yeah, but, I mean, the special use permit, they have to supply a certain amount of parking.
Right.
So, I mean, but as far as changes at that particular intersection, that's something that could be.
But you know if it's not marked. My point is if it's not marked, somebody's gonna park there.
It did drop the meeting and it was pointed out to them that, you know, they needed to be wary of that.
Do you have a sense of what distance we recommend? Want to look at it? Coming later?
All the way to the entrance to the Lucent property.
On, on, on?
South Tenth, right.
Probably about a hundred feet.
Every bit of that.
On just that side of the road?
Both sides. You know, because those trucks are almost eighty feet long now.
Agreed.
There are some residents that get back to bed, that, 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 that their parking is now.
Any other questions?
Gary?
We mowed the weed and again. It'd be as bad as pushing snow all summer, or all winter. Uh, did some, sprayed some weeds. We removed the temporary crossing at the floodgates where the railroad took the crossing out. And I was told by one of the guys from Burlington, Oregon, they would put it back in, so we're crossing our fingers on the.
They would put it back in, permanently?
Yes. Uh, we opened floodgates, cleared mud off a little rock road, which is not completed yet. We still have to clean the ditches once it gets stiff enough to pick it up. Power washed the playground, the equipment and pavilions of Valley Springs Park. We serviced equipment and trailers. We cleaned ditches and hauled mud from Little Rock the best that we could. We did water patches on Kiefer, Main, Biltmore and Laporte. Pushed up brush site. Replaced a light pole on Main Street and one on Third Street. And after yesterday's effort, all street lights are up and working again. We worked on some light poles and I didn't add a couple of things. We had been painting lines around the schools with crosswalks and no parking. And got the soccer nets out and getting their fields ready.
So the targeting area asks you to observe this test light, put the decorative lamp in the corner here towards the market. Has anybody had an opinion about that?
There's four or five different lamps down by the mill as well. Why was this one selected?
What's that?
Why was this one selected over the others? Because there's one down there in particular that looks a lot better than the one out here.
The difference between that is this bulb is fifty-one dollars and to get that orange glow, they're like three hundred and twenty dollars. And we have ninety-one of them.
I think if it's gonna save us in the long run, we oughta do it. Were you thinking about replacing them all at once?
Yep.
And that'd be better? I mean, how much do the bulbs that are in there cost now?
About twenty-seven dollars a bulb, but the ballast that, the, this high-pressure sodium is like eighty dollars. So we're over a hundred dollars if we have to replace the ballast to the bulb.
And how, what's the life of the new LEDs?
I forget the exact hours, but I figured it out. If it's true, it's nineteen years.
And it's gonna create less, less?
Less draw, less load on it, which can be better for the system, less heating up, you know, the wires. We're having a lot of problems with burning wires off in poles because of the draw. This would take like thirty of the electricity to run them.
So that LED doesn't require that ballast, doesn't it?
Nope. No, it's direct wire. So we would eliminate pretty much all of Marzico's maintenance on them, which was, I think, around forty-five hundred dollars this year is what we spent with them.
Well, that's how we get to know where you're at, I think. Yep, go for it.
Good. Anything else?
Do you have a way to, sorry, do you have a way to recycle those bulbs?
I'm gonna figure that out because we're gonna have a bunch of them.
Okay, thanks.
Hey, do we have any problems with any mowers or did we order this best? I got, I received a phone call. I personally did not get a chance to take a look at it because I was out of town, but basically saying that we're near the cemetery area, that we go over, I guess the cemetery, that there, it was uneven, all of the woods. I said, I guess.
Yes, we had a problem with, with the oldest mower with its sheer to pin, which allowed one side of the deck to drop about a half inch. And that's been resolved.
Okay, thank you.
Mike, you have something?
Kid, I just wanna know if you can meet me at some time in the future that's convenient for your folks to, to talk about Mr. DeJonathan's single problem.
Yeah, sometime after next, or beginning of next week.
All right, I'm with you.
We get through your benefit.
That'd be great, yeah. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
That's it?
Please, Gary.
Steve? Good evening, everyone. Should have a report in front of you. Probably the biggest things to bring out is we've done quite a bit of PR in the month of July with fireworks, standbys and things like that. We also had our annual pump test. Our pumps are required to be tested every year and certified, which is one of the ISO requirements. And everything passed this year. Last year we ended up spending like almost two thousand dollars on one of our oldest trucks to get it to pass. Everything went through first time this time. So we're pretty proud of that. And as you see by the note at the bottom, we did have our ISO audit the other day. In days gone by, when ISO would come in, they'd spend a couple of days there and they'd go out with the water department, flow hydrants and do all kinds of stuff. Who brought this kid? He was in and gone in two hours. I think this shows that we were prepared for him. Everything that he asked for, we were able to hand him a copy of. A couple of things that they did need and Steve's been working on that is that some hydrant flows or something and he sent that stuff in, so we think we did well. I'm gonna stop short of saying yes. We got our four back, but I'm confident that we did well. And we probably won't know anything for about six months, even though he probably could tell us that day. They're not allowed to until they send it to your home office and everything else, but everything seemed to go good.
Do we check flow on hydrants annually? Every, every hydrant?
Not every hydrant. Random hydrants throughout the system.
Well, certain lines especially.
What did we do last month with the ISO?
They selected ten hydrants throughout our system. They selected them, not us. We had to get static pressure, residual pressure and a flow, two hydrant flow test.
So, yes, they had eleven calls for last year. Can you categorize your calls?
Yes. I don't have it here, but yes, I categorize. And of the eight, four of them ended up being miscellaneous kitchen oven fires and things like that, that they didn't count. We had one flu fire that they didn't count. So, when it was all said and done, we actually had two working structure fires in the city in 2018, is all they counted. We had a trailer fire and a garage fire.
It seems low. Sounds like good news.
That's good news, yeah.
Yeah, you said that.
Kenny, when you put a new fireman on and supplement, and I know they're volunteers and stuff, what requirements in their own personal vehicles do you have, and who pays for them?
They respond in their, their vehicle. We issue them a blue light. And during the probationary period, we tell them they can use the blue light, that if people aren't getting out of the way, they turn it off and drive normal. And there's still a little bit of question with my understanding, once they go en route and they're using proper procedures, that our VFIS insurance will cover them responding to the firehouse. It's not been tested that I know of, and I hope it never does here, but they are required to take their personal vehicle to the firehouse. And then, that's one of the reasons why we did the other vehicles, like the pickup truck. That way, we don't have to commandeer somebody's vehicle to go to Wine Garden or Bloomsdale or something to help them out.
So, just the blue light, that's it?
A blue light and siren per, for ordinance. Because of financial reasons, we don't issue the siren right away. Because to buy a light and a siren, issue it to a guy, you're looking at $250 or $300 right off the bat. And if we go out and we issue all this stuff right away, and they decide to leave, and then I have to try to get all this stuff back. So, we kind of do a probationary thing. That way, I'm only out, cost of $100 light during the probationary status. We also issue a, a blue light card that gives them permission to use blue lights. And then, during the probationary period for that first year, we watch and monitor. And if we have any issues, we pull the blue light from them too, and they have to drive normal.
But as far as responding, even with a, a blue light and sirens?
It, it still doesn't give you the right away. You're basically asking for it, even as the chief, if somebody won't get out of my way, there's nothing I can do about it. I can't force them off the road, so.
I mean, you gotta stop it off, stop by.
And we have a rule on no more than 10 mile an hour posted speed limit too, no matter where we're at, so.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay.
Any questions? Any committee reports? Any public comments? That takes us to the concept agenda. You have to have handouts here. The blow session.
Motion to approve.
Can I, can I ask if we could possibly come up with a form for street closure requests? They seem to come to us in all different forms, and I think if we just had a form for folks to fill out, it would be a little easier. Because this one that we're approving tonight is intersections, but not full lengths of the street.
Yes.
Thank you. And with dates and times of street closings would be appreciated. Do we have any idea what time streets are gonna close this weekend?
Six o'clock on Friday.
Okay.
Until six o'clock on Sunday.
Thank you. That would be great if that were on a form.
I have a, I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Takes us to whole business. Second reading of Bill Number 4298, an ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, to establish a procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for certain officials.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a roll call, both, please.
Alderman Johnson.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Jones.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Moreton.
Yes.
Seven, yes, zero, no, one absent. Bill Number 4298 now becomes ordinance 4227.
Thank you. It's the second reading of Bill Number 4299, an ordinance providing for the annexation to the City of St. Genevieve's existing corporate limits, certain real estate property owned by Raymond and Carol Ziegler.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a roll call, please.
Alderman Moreton.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Jones.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Johnson.
Yes.
Seven, yes, zero, no, one absent. Bill Number 4299 now becomes ordinance 4228.
Thank you. Takes us to new business, Bill Number 4300, an ordinance approving change order number one to the contract with Jokers Incorporated on the Chadwell Lane improvements, the amount not to exceed $20,400.
Move through.
Second.
All in favor?
Sorry, can we have a discussion?
Yeah, sure.
Did we, did we talk about this last meeting?
It's the overlay of the existing road from the end of the new construction.
Okay, thank you. The, the language did not make sense to me for some reason.
Do we have a first and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Takes us to Bill Number 4301, shows us a first and second reading of this bill, an ordinance authorizing the collection of municipal court costs.
Question. Who pays this? Is this passed on to the, the person that gets the ticket, or we have to pay it?
We are not paying this. This is a court cost that they're assessed if there's a disposition where the defendant completes guilty or found guilty. All of these are the same, except for the addition of the court automation fee. That would be new, and, well, actually, there's two new things. One is a court automation fee, and the second one is the sheriff's retirement fund surcharge. All the rest of these have already been adopted and approved. I suggested we put them all in one ordinance, because they have, the court cost ordinance has to be forwarded to ASCA for the transfer. And so, they've requested the documentation, that'd be easier if we just put it all into one ordinance. We have, we adopted all of those. The court automation fee is for, basically, the pay for the court automation, the court, the computers and all that. It would not come, these do not come to the city. Currently, they do, and then they go out to different funds and, and different locations. The court costs currently are $12, and they stay with the city. The, you've already adopted with the transfer ordinance, the increase to $15, and those court costs stay with the state after the transfer. So, the, the other new thing is the sheriff's retirement fund. That's been a subject of some controversy with regard to municipal courts, because for, it's been in a, the sheriff's retirement fund, I'll, I'll give you the abbreviated version. Their statute authorizing had been in place for many years, and the guidance had always been that it couldn't apply to municipal courts, because municipal courts have nothing to do with the sheriff. And this is a retirement fund for elected sheriffs, not deputy sheriffs. I mean, it was a couple, I mean, two or three years ago, the Attorney General's Office and then ASCA provided new guidance, saying they should be applied to municipal court cases. There's been litigation about it. With regard, once the transfer takes place, I think an argument can be made that it should apply to the municipal court cases that are in the Associate Circuit Court. So, this language would adopt it then, because then the sheriff actually would be providing bailiff services, and that's such with regard to the Associate Circuit Courts. And I don't want the city to end up in litigation about whether or not we should collect the surcharge from defendants, if it's appropriate after the transfer takes place.
So, those are gonna bring their total on top of their fine until 3850?
Uh, I'm trying to do math. Whatever, whatever this adds up to is what they, what they would have to pay. But, yeah, the court costs are assessed by the court. Some of these, so that, so basically, I just wanted this thing, we had to adopt the court automation fee, because ASCA is saying that has to be done. We've already done the $15 increase for when the, when the transfer takes place, and the rest of them are just restating what you've already passed years ago.
So, you felt like we, this section one, even though that was in the ordinance that was passed in March, it needed to be repeated?
Well, I don't, I don't think it needed to be, but I wanted to send them one document.
Everything in one.
Yeah. So, it was really, it was, we had to do the court automation fee, and I suggested, I, I just wanted to have everything together, so I could just give them one document, so there's no confusion. Because they didn't, when they asked for this, they didn't see that the $15 was already in our ordinance, and so it's already in there. And so, I just figured I just wanted to give them one document, so.
Do we need to repeal the other one?
No, this one replaces it. Super system, that's right.
So, I, I, full disclosure, work in the Circuit Clerk's office, so I've been dealing with a whole lot of this. And I called Martin yesterday to ask why it was on for a first and second reading this evening. He indicated that he thought, correct me if I'm wrong, that Julie Bova asked for this to be passed quickly.
That was what I was told.
Okay. I have since spoken with Julie Bova, who has spoken with ASCA, and they have stated that it's waited this long. Two more weeks shouldn't hurt. I don't feel we should have a second reading tonight, because there's a meeting with some involved parties on the 20th of this month. I, I don't anticipate this changing, but I think that all those folks need to meet and get on the same page. We need to have some answers to some questions regarding the transfer. And I don't think we should do a second reading on this this evening.
It makes no difference to me whether it's a second reading tonight.
Yeah, it would not, it might desire, so I don't care.
That's fine, we'll just do it for, I'm, I'm fine with that. I agree with you.
Thank you. I think, and I would also like.
I just need it done before October 1st.
Okay. And I would also, since we're on this subject, and I mentioned this to you, Mr. Mayor, if we could have Jeremy come in, I've got a list of questions. I don't know when the appropriate time is to discuss how this transfer's been going.
I've talked to Jeremy, and I can have him here at the next meeting, and I'd like for everybody to have a list, that list.
My list.
Your list, yes.
Sure. I can send it out, and if anybody needs some information on how things have been going and what information we have. I spoke with the chief today, because the officers are handing out information with tickets that is not valid information until October 1st. So, there's a whole lot of things I think we need to work out quickly, so that this goes a little smoother.
Oh, it's, it's a, it's a new adventure, so.
Yeah.
It's gonna be challenging, and we know that, we knew that going in, so. And I know there's, you know, so, and that's why we're, we got the meeting on the 20th. So, it's, we can do that. It's not a problem.
I think in the, in the meantime, I think there's a few things we need to work out. I don't know that this is the appropriate venue, but there's a lot of, there's a lot of miscommunication with what happens for tickets that are written now, that will be heard over there in court on October 9th. So, did we get that figured out?
I am told that that has been addressed, and they, they have their, Lisa will be entering the data.
Okay. And so, anyone who receives a ticket, will get something from the officers with the information to see Lisa until October 1st?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to approve first reading?
Second.
Have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Is there any other business? One thing I want to communicate, in your packet, I had a meeting, a lessons learned meeting over the, the last flood event we had. Had some key players in that, some good information came out of that. We're gonna do another meeting, probably within a month. Put those notes, those are the notes from that meeting, for the next flood event, which will come, because we're, these flood events are happening more and more. So, I'll keep you up to date on that as we, as, as there's another meeting. Give you the opportunity to be at the meeting if you'd like.
Can I communicate something as well?
Yes, sir.
In regards to the budget? I would like to ask everybody to at least consider, not necessarily changing our, we're working on the budget here, but maybe changing how we are doing our budget expectations. I find it very hard to budget when the ending numbers of our budget is coming out $200 to apparently $400,000 difference on the ending numbers. It makes it very hard to make decisions when our final numbers are coming up so much different compared to our proposed budgets. I think it would be beneficial to, to set expectations closer to what we think they're going to be, instead of worst case scenario on expenditures. I completely understand doing worst case scenario on, on revenues, but I have a problem saying that we have a balanced budget, when we don't really have a balanced budget. We just have a budget that so happens to balance at the end of each year. But when we try to pass a budget that is $200,000 to $300,000 in deficit, it incentivizes, not incentivizing, I guess, because everybody does a good job, but it, it at least allows and everybody to, to, I guess, at least give us a, a negative budget, you know, as far as the deficit goes. Statistically, I guess, over the last three years, we've, four years or so, we've been good, but we certainly have had years that we've been negative. I have the data somewhere, but. I just wanted to at least ask everybody to consider that in regards to the email that was sent out, and, and consider it, because it's something that I would like to, to pursue.
I kind of agree with Brian a little bit and stuff. You know, as far as the amendments, I mean, I don't know where the amendments are really, you know, you had mentioned in the email, Martin, that we could be two weeks, you know, that's worst case scenario, but I'm just not sure what any opposition would be to looking at those amendments each time.
It's just a procedural.
Right.
Question. The, normally, what we have done is as long as everybody's operating under their total budget, and we monitor that closely, we allow the department head to spend over in one line item, you know, as long as, as the total is staying within the budget, the budgeted limits. And then, at the end of the year, we do a budget reconciliation act, which brings the actual, be reflected in, in the, in the final budget, because the auditors want the budget.
Right.
Thing to match. And Eric and I had this conversation today, he budgeted in three, you know, $3 for gas, you know, but gas hasn't been $3, but we don't know that it won't be $3, so we budget for $3, you know, $3 for gas. We can budget it at $250. We, you know, we can, we can budget the revenues to reflect our current and predictable receipts for this year. We didn't. We based it on last year's receipts. This year's are, are higher, but we can, we can do that. So, we can, we can get there. I mean, we can do that. Eric made a suggestion that you might want to consider, is if we dispose of an asset which we discussed in closed session, we could, we could eliminate our, our, our lease payments, using some of that capital for the police, retired police car leases. And again, we can, you know, make things like that happen and end up where you, where I think you want to be. It's your budget. I mean, I, there's no, none of us had any strong feelings in opposition to what Brian's proposing. I mean, there's, there's logic there.
I have a question.
But it just means we may have to call some special meetings that we've never had before in order to consider items that are urgent, but have exceeded the adopt, the, the approved line item. I'm here all the time, but that's not a problem for me. It's an issue for whether you want to accept the possibility that that would happen three or four times a year.
So, we can't, we can't exceed line items?
Yeah, quick meetings. We can't, we, we, in the past, we have exceeded, allowed the directors, department directors to exceed a line item.
As long as we didn't exceed.
As long as they stay under their approved total budget.
Okay.
But if it is your desire to not have that happen, then whenever that situation exists, they'll have to not do what they were planning and wait till they get your approval.
Does it, does that just require a quarrel?
Yeah.
Okay. Because it might be hard for him to attend if it's an emergency meeting. I'm just saying.
Are you? using some of that capital for the police, retired police car leases. And again, we can, you know, make things like that happen and end up where you, where I think you want to be. It's your budget. I mean, there's no, none of us have any strong feelings in opposition to what Brian's proposing. I mean, there's, there's logic there.
I have a question.
But it just means we may have to call some special meetings that we've never had before in order to consider items that are urgent, that have exceeded the adopt, the approved line item. I'm here all the time, that's not a problem for me. It's an issue for whether you want to accept the possibility that that would happen three or four times a year.
So we can't, we can't exceed line items?
Yes, quick meetings. We can't, we, we, in the past, we have exceeded, allowed the directors, department directors to exceed a line item.
As long as we didn't exceed.
As long as they stay under their approved total budget. But if it is your desire to not have that happen, then whenever that situation exists, they'll have to not do what they were planning and wait till they get your approval.
Does it? Does that just require quarrel?
Yeah.
Because it might be hard for him to attend if it's an emergency meeting. I'm just saying. No, not you, Gary.
Oh, I thought you pointed me. We can continue the policy. I mean, we could continue the policy to not require line item approval. I mean, that's, that's kind of the extreme outcome, if you're, if you're comfortable with that. But then it kind of makes the whole thing not make much sense. Because nobody, that, if, anytime a department director is in a position where they're gonna have to exceed their total budget, we're not acting until you approve it. We can talk about it.
Like I said, I just wanted to, you know, at least consider, think about it for the next, because that's gonna be something that I intend on bringing up when we ever able to start giving out comments, so I wanted to at least express my opinion there.
And, and we distributed tonight the information that Brian had asked for and made reference to, so you have a chance to look at that.
Oh, sorry.
Any more communication?
Sorry.
I, I just want to support what these two gentlemen say, because it will make decisions clearer, and there's, there's no, there wouldn't be any reason to wait for the regular scheduled meeting to, to talk about that, to get approval. So I mean, it could be a.
Well, as long as you're available.
Or.
Yeah.
I will.
We are elected and paid, so.
Yeah.
Maybe we should make ourselves.
Part of the job.
You still have business, you have a business to run, you could, you know, so, yeah, that's, that's my only concern, is somebody needs something, and we're going to wait, they need it, and well, yeah, well, maybe I can be there. That's my only concern, you know.
Well, we have to have 24-hour notice, right?
Oh, yeah, we can't have a meeting without 24-hour notice.
So, and that's my question is, is we have, we have a history with this budget of balancing itself, and you're not seeing it right now, so.
Right, no, I mean, and like I said, it.
The history's there for how many years?
The last, including, if you include this year that's gonna happen, per your email, you said it will balance out and be equal. Yes, the, the last four years, there were some negatives before that, for sure. So there have also been negative years.
Yeah.
But, you know, like I said, it's, there, if there would have been, for my math, and I, I got, per, you know, what, what the information I was given, you know, if the aldermen would have realized the, and how far in the green we may have been, there could have been some different decisions made in the past, is what I'm getting at. Instead of realize, thinking that we're $200,000 in the hole, or on this budget, $300,000 in the hole, even though in the end, sure, it's, it's coming green, when you're expect, doing a proposed budget, you're not expecting it to be green, or at least I'm not, that's what, you know, what I'm seeing. I'm, when I'm looking at this budget, I'm like, okay, well, this is what I'm going to expect. So I would, like I said, it just makes it a little bit hard for decision making when, when we're expecting $300,000 deficit. And I know we don't actually expect that, but when we're, you know, when we're proposing this, to me, when we accept this.
That potential, that potential exists.
Yeah, it could, the potential exists, and that's a problem.
That percentage of our budget is a big number, and that's, I think, what you're alluding to, the fact it's not small money. But Martin, over the past, say, the last couple of years, give us an example of an item that we may have, you know, putting that into effect that we may delay it up to two weeks unless there's an emergency meeting. Give us an example of something that's happened in that timeframe that we may have put the city's business at jeopardy.
Well, the best example is in the water and sewer fund. But, you know, Steve comes in and says that I have a piece of equipment that broke, and I'm trying to think of the most recent example of that, and, and, you know, and it costs $100,000 to fix it. Well, he can't, he can't operate the treatment plant without fixing it, so he fixed it. Took that line item over what the budget would have allowed, but under the circumstances, he, he did it. Now, I'd say if you give me and my directors kind of discretion to decide when something is an emergency, doesn't, and we can act on it without having to call a special meeting, then I think the chances of having to have a special meeting is not gonna be called over whether we buy an extra box of pencils.
Well, I would agree, I'd like to have that. I, especially when you're at the water plant and the sewer.
So I'm.
We can't afford to shut down.
So, again, if we, with that understanding, I, it's not as problematic, but if, if we don't have that understanding, and any expenditure that's gonna take an individual line item over the budgeted amount is gonna tie our hands, I'd have to call a special meeting.
But we could always review your decision at a meeting that's, that's more reasonable, scheduled more reasonably.
If that happens, we'll certainly report it to you at the next regular meeting. And if, and if we exercise our discretion ill-advisedly, you'll tell us that, and we won't do it that way next time. But, you know, you, we have responsible directors, I think we have a good board, I think everybody trusts each other, maybe hadn't always been that way, but right now, I'm comfortable with that.
So maybe for our next work session, we discuss what you're, what you're wanting us to look at as well as.
Well, I'm gonna anticipate that discussion and prepare something for you to review.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
We had our meeting with Dunsey June the 7th.
I've heard nothing.
Well, I hate to keep bringing this up, but that does affect the budget, whether we spend that money or not. I mean, it comes out of the capital improvement fund.
Yeah.
And it's not fair to him, it's not fair to us.
Want to force his hand?
I want to do something.
Well, we talked about, I think where we ran into delay, we, we told the man that that's a good project to do in the winter, so. It's August, so it's getting, it's getting close, so.
He said he'd be back in a month, it's been two.
Okay, well. Any other, any other communication? With that, I'd like a motion to go into closed session for real estate.
Make a motion to go into closed session for real estate?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Johnson.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Jones.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Wolfman.
Yes.
Motion carries.